Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the Village Board meeting for January 21st, 2013. Tonight is our regular voting meeting. And if we could have the clerk call role, please.
Now this role-
To the cast of thousands.
Yes, this role will take awhile and a lot of you, I can't even pick out everybody. So, I'll start out and then I'll just say in all the other Village employees that are here tonight, because we have a lot. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Seneca?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Ziminek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Here.
IT Manager Liljberg.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor Facilities Manager Chorney.
Here.
Director of EMS Services Drouly.
Here.
And the rest of all you employees. Yes, cast of thousands.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have several reports this evening. First off, we will do our employee service awards, followed by fire department awards. So, shall we get started, Ron?
Mm-hmm. Okay, we're going to start off by reading the service pins. And if you're here, if you could come forward, they will give you the, your pin. And of course, for the department heads that are here, if your individual employees are not here, we'll, we'll have a collection here and we can get these to you. But the first set of service pins, and this is not necessarily all organized in order of department, but it's, I guess it's alphabetical is how you did this year. So, for five years, we have our appointment to the West Suburban Mass Transit District, John Cannon, if he's here. For EMA, we have Joyce Fidesco. And for the fire department, we have Christine Hardy. And for the fire department, we have Patrick Joll. I apologize if I don't get all of these names exactly correct. And I know this gentleman's not here any longer, he had to leave earlier, but Larry Kaufman for the fire department. And then we have Annette Leaks for the finance department. Matthew Martin, fire department. Inzmezil, fire and police commission.
You would?
Okay. About a thousand. Phil Rossetti, public works.
Yay! 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 And then from IT, we have Fred Stefani.
Is Fred here tonight? Okay. And then rounding out the list of five-year service pins, we have two EMA members, Chris Speetek and Kelly Speetek.
Okay, so the next group is the 10-year service pins.
From the fire department, we have Jeremiah Adesko. Did I get that pronunciation close? From EMA, we have Floyd Bein. Is it Bein?
That's right. 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 And then from the fire department, we have Darren Boyce.
Public Works. Melissa Brendel. Is Melissa here? Okay. From the police department, we have Officer Nick Glenn. Also from the police department, Officer Greg Gomorzac.
And we also have from the police department, Officer Greg Hausner, if he's there.
And then another EMA volunteer, Tom Keegan. Is Tom here?
Yeah. 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 From the police department, we have Officer Sean Lawrence.
Sean here?
Yeah.
Okay. Fire department, we have Catherine Meyer. And also from the fire department, we have James Nichols. And next, from the fire department, we have Kevin O'Hare. He's here. And Officer Sean Ryan from the police department. And from EMA, we have Bob Scheck.
Next, from the fire department, we have Christopher Stoltman.
He's here. And also from the fire department, we have Eric Swanson. And Officer Stephen Thompson from the police department.
And next, we have from public works, John Yader.
Is John here? And finally rounding out this group from the fire department, we have Richard Zazada? Zada? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. Not here? Okay. Okay, and the next group is the 15-year service pins. We have several from the fire department here, starting off the list, we have Thomas Bills.
On call.
He's on call.
On call.
On call. Then we have Eric Blaskovic. We have Jim Fitzgerald. Nope. And then Gary Goodman.
Gary Goodman. Yeah. 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 Next, from the police department, we have our, one of our deputy chiefs, Jim Gunther. And someone who I'm sure is very popular with most employees that are here this evening,
the finance department Lynn Johnson, our payroll department.
Right.
From fire and police commission, Bob Cavanda.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.[822.54]
...30 years of dedicated service to the community. You have to wear that every day.
All right. The, uh, we have a large group of flags this year. I don't remember having this many people on time. And someone said to me earlier today, it was a real testimony that, you know, it was in the, um, Javi, that, uh, people had their village and their owners. Uh, these last two groups, we've got 35 years and then we've got a 34-year flag. So the first 35-year service flag goes to Mike Torey from Hope Hurst.[48.12][48.12](applause).
Thank you.[54.12][54.12](applause).
And the next one we have is Chief Tom Murr.[67.12][67.12](applause).
The, uh, final 35-year flag goes to our department representative, Frank Scallan.[88.12][88.12](applause).
Forty years. No Wally?
That's absolutely supportive issue. Great. I think that's it. Thank you to everyone that came in and Israel that we're talking about earlier. It's such a wonderful testament to village and to all of our village elected officials to have employees that are so long-term and so dedicated. And I know these last couple of years have been rough for everyone and all of our employees have given above and beyond our wildest expectations. So thank you all very much for your service and hopefully we'll be doing this a lot of times and more plaques every year. So thank you very much and congratulations to everyone.[180.01][180.01](applause).
Mr. John Mike.
Okay, next up, we will have, um, Fire Chief Weiss come up to the podium. I think he has a number of awards. I always get a little nervous that I left an iron on or something when I see this many firefighters in one room, but...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, it's really nice to be able to do this, uh, tonight, especially with the service awards. And, um, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm gonna ask you to come back forward, if you don't mind, after you get a drink of water to help present these awards that we're gonna do tonight. The, uh, first award that we wanna do is I like to, uh, to ask our EMS deputy coordinators, uh, Ed's here and Glenn. Great. I'm sorry.
Dave.
And Dave, come forward. Come on up here. Gays wanna go up front? Actually, we'd like to have Floyd come up. Yep, come on up.
Holy smokes.
The, um, I'll give this to you. Special recognition from our, uh, from our EMA officers and members, uh, to Floyd for his 10 years of service to EMA.[283.83][283.83](applause). Did you get another picture? Yeah. Okay, thank you Floyd.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay, next, uh, we have a, um, special award and actually we're catching up some awards that, uh, that I overlooked, uh, during the year in 2012, but we had a, uh, a significant call on May 5th, 2012. And that call was, um, our medics and firefighters were called to, uh, respond to a child down in a pool and not breathing. Prior to the fire department arriving on the scene, three individuals at this birthday party responded to the aid of the three-year-old floating in the bottom of the pool. Could I have Phil come forward, Brandon and Dave?[347.81][347.81](applause). The, um, Phil jumped into the pool and pulled little Henry, lifeless body, out of the pool and handed him over to Brandon and David, who both started CPR on three-year-old Henry. They did compressions until Henry opened his eyes and coughed up water. Without the quick action of these three individuals, the outcome of this call could have been a tragic incident. They all stepped up and saved this little life of this little three-year-old. We have Henry here today. And if Henry and his parents could come forward.[393.81][393.81](applause). Actually, uh, he doesn't know it, but, uh, grandpa's here tonight and Captain Light is, uh, the captain on the Westmont Fire Department also. And, uh, Carl, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything special tonight to these individuals, but you're more, more willing to if you want to.
Just glad they were there and did what they did. Turned out this way and Henry just had it for a purpose, so.[433.81][433.81](applause).
So in response to this, what we like to do is offer for the Westmont Fire Department these Citizen Life Saving Awards. And these are being presented to Dave, um, Brandon and to Phil in recognition of outstanding actions taken towards saving a human life on May 5th, 2012. I'll let you pass those out.[463.12][463.12](applause).
Thank you. One more? One more. Oh.
Actually, we have two more. Yes. On August 11th, 2012, our medics responded mutual aid to TriSafe Fire Department for a person having chest pain. When they arrived on the scene, they had a male that was 53-years-old. here tonight, if they could come forward, Joe and whoever you have else from your award Lynn Drolli was the medic in back of the ambulance transporting this medic or this patient to the hospital. The patient went into cardiac arrest in the back of the ambulance. She defibrillated the patient three times. committee, come on up in front. On the third time, the patient came into a junctional rhythm with a pulse and started When we get these type of calls, um, the peers, their peers, the firemen and the medics breathing. They delivered her and her partner, delivered the, uh, continued on to the hospital while write up these calls to recognize their own. he saw this was going on in the back of the ambulance. And, um, this committee of peers review these and they follow procedures, uh, that And this was, um, this was, they were transported to Hinsdale. And the patient arrived at Hinsdale breathing, had a rhythm and had a pulse and ended up calls fall into certain categories. And this committee, uh, reviewed this call and recognized and awarded to Lynn in recognition leaving the hospital five days later. of outstanding emergency service provided in the saving of a human life on August 11th, So I'd like to have Lynn Drolli come forward.[555.49][555.49](applause). 2012. This is awarded on the 21st day of January. And I'll let Mayor Pro Tim.[564.16][564.16](applause).
And if you wanna see my face when I open the bag. He's 20 years of experience right there. Thank you.[578.16][578.16](applause).
Our last award that we have is, uh, I'm honored here tonight to have our chair of our awards committee come forward and talk about, um, the peers of the fire department nominating their firefighter of the year. And, um, the committee puts a lot of time in reviewing these. And as the chairman is gonna talk about tonight is, uh, they had four nominees this year and it was hard to, uh, decide on the person, but this person they did choose was an outstanding individual and well deserves this, uh, this award. So I'll allow Joe to come up, the chair, and talk a little bit about it.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Hopefully you can, everyone can hear me. Uh, as the chief stated, uh, I have the honor tonight to present the Exceptional Employee Award for the year of 2012. I would like to first tell you a little bit about the awards committee that I do chair as the chief stated. Our committee is comprised of a mixture of all ranks within the fire department, from firefighter to captain. We request, request that our personnel submit the names of their peers whose job performance has stood out over the past 12 months. We've received numerous well-qualified nominees for this award and we are proud to say we have many qualified people in our organization. In the past, the decision-making process has not been easy and this year was no exception. All the runners-up should feel honored to be among such a high-caliber employees and the committee congratulates you all. It was after serious deliberation that we made the selection for the Exceptional Employee of 2012. And the awards committee is proud to announce firefighter Chris Gerlick for the Westmont Fire Department Exceptional Employee of the Year 2012. Guys, first step forward.[698.82][698.82](applause). Yeah, a little bit more.
Yeah, I got something to finish. Yeah, a little bit more. Hey, they got, uh, you got some, just a little bit to wrap up?
Chris has shown over the past year his dedication to the fire department. Some of the, some of his involvements have been assisting with the quartermaster duties, with our association as vice president, helping to allocate funds for our 2% board and supporting, organizing our support for breast cancer awareness as well as prostate cancer, and also assisting with coordinating our holiday party for our association. So on behalf of Chief Weiss and the awards committee, I'd like to tell you, Chris, and for all of your dedicated personnel, keep up the great work. Your efforts really count and you're very much appreciated.[748.38][748.38](applause).
Sure. Right there. If we could do this, like, facing you all. I just wanna thank everybody, uh, in the department for really having a little piece of this plaque. Uh, you know, when I was growing up, I always wanted to be a fireman. In fact, one of my great inspirations, all the way in the back, it's Carl Witt. Um, but yeah, just a big thank you to my family for really encouraging me to always strive, uh, never do anything unless I wanna do it to the fullest potential and to do my best. Uh, and I will just continue to do the best I can for this department. I love going to work every day. I love that my coworkers, they're truly like my family. So thank you all for having a little piece of this plaque.[794.82][794.82](applause).
Okay, thank you, thank you for your time. That's all we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can go ahead and move on. One thing we all know for sure is we have the best first responders ever in this community. Great job, fire and police. Uh, the only other thing I have is to request an executive session for the purpose of filling a vacancy of a public office after the meeting. And then we will move on to a court.
I just wanted, um, residents to realize that starting with the next water bill, there will be an increase and it's due to the pass-through from the City of Chicago and DuPage County Water Commission. Has nothing to do with the village. We're charging you what we're paying for it, so I just want them to understand that. It starts with the February bill, which is the majority of this board.
True. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Attorney Zemenek.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Manager Cyril.
Uh, just one announcement, um, as has been typically the case for many, many years, the, uh, village, uh, in the past, through the Communications Commission and then after that through the, uh, actually, the other way around, Cable TV Commission, then the Communications Commission, uh, hosted a candidate's forum, uh, for the election for all the elected officials, uh, cutting across all the taxing bodies in the community. And I just wanted to mention, I don't have the specific details yet, but there will be a press release probably this week. Um, and this is going to be formally hosted by the Elmhurst League of Women's Voters and we believe it's gonna probably be in the first, uh, week of March. It will, they'll, like I said, there'll be more details this, uh, week, probably released on our website with a press release. That's all I have.
Anything else? That's it?
Nope.
Great, thank you. Okay, first up, um, I believe we have nothing to be removed from the consent agenda, so with that, I will entertain a motion.
So move Scott.
Second, Emery. Roll call, please.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
I should call you Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes. Hiring freeze. Board to consider a motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring a full-time village planner filling current vacancies. Motion to approve, Emery.
Second Nero.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee, um, Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
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 Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
I should call you Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes. Hiring freeze. Board to consider a motion to temporarily lift the hiring freeze for the sole purpose of hiring a full-time village planner filling current vacancies. Motion to approve, Emery.
Second Nero.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee, um, Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Trustee Fleming.
No.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Trustee Klebanow.
No.
Trustee, Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
No. Downtown development permit in Sprinkler waiver, 246 North Cass Avenue, Neat Kitchen and Bar. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Jason Van Lente of Neat Kitchen and Bar to operate a full-service restaurant in the downtown B1 Limited Business District. One, a development permit and two, a sprinkler waiver and those can be taken as one.
Motion to approve both one and two. Emery.
Second Nero.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Trustee Klebanow.
No.
Trustee Emery.
No.
Trustee Scott.
No.
Trustee Klebanow.
No.
Trustee, Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
No. Downtown development permit and sprinkler waiver, 246 North Cass Avenue, Neat Kitchen and Bar. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Jason Van Lente of Neat Kitchen and Bar to operate a full-service restaurant in the downtown B1 Limited Business District. One, a development permit and two, a sprinkler waiver and those can be taken as one.
Motion to approve both one and two. Emery.
Second Nero.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee, Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
No. Downtown development permit and sprinkler waiver, 246 North Cass Avenue, Neat Kitchen and Bar. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Jason Van Lente of Neat Kitchen and Bar to operate a full-service restaurant in the downtown B1 Limited Business District. One, a development permit and two, a sprinkler waiver and those can be taken as one.
Motion to approve both one and two. Emery.
Second Nero.
Comments, questions? Roll call.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes. St. Patrick's Day event and parade 2013. Board to consider ordinances approving the following requests for Holy Trinity's 2013 St. Patrick's Day event and parade. Number one, permit amplified sound in the downtown business district in the Holy Trinity Church South parking lot on Cass Avenue on Friday, March 15th, 2013, from 4:00 to 10:30 p.m. and on Saturday, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. Two, close a section of Cass Avenue from approximately Troby to 5th, not to 55th Street, I'm sorry, Richmond, as determined by the chief of police on Saturday, March 16th, 2013, from 10:45 a.m. to 12:00 noon for the first annual St. Patrick's Day Parade. And three, waiver of all fees associated with the parade.
Motion to approve paragraph one.
Uh, they're all taken together as a single ordinance.
Oh, it says ordinances.
Ah, I didn't catch that. I apologize. It was written up as a single ordinance, so one motion will suffice.
Accepted.
Just when I figured out how to do it.
Me too. I was so proud of myself because it said ordinances.
John. Motion to approve paragraphs one, two and three. Emery.
Second. On the question, um, I missed Thursday. It was my understanding that the geographic description was going to be Troby to, approximately Troby to 55th Street as determined by the chief of police, because I think you changed it to Richmond.
Yeah, they never really wanted 55th.
Yeah, they wanna stop at Holy Trinity.
Yeah.
Okay, so the ordinance is written approximately Troby to 55th Street as determined by the chief of police. He's gonna probably limit it, I guess, based on the discussion, but we left it a little broad. That's how we had done with the, I think, Park District.
Trustee and Friends.
Trustee and Friends Parade.
Yeah, it was consistent with the way we had worded it on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Sounds good.
Works. Sounds good.
Cool.
Roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Red, white and barbecue 2013. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from the Westmont Lions Club in regard to their red, white and barbecue event. One, request to close Plaza Drive from Burr Oak to Blackhawk Drive on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2013 and reopen on Monday, May 27th, 2013. Egress for local business traffic to businesses on Plaza Drive between Burr Oak and Blackhawk will be permitted from the intersection of Plaza and Burr Oak. Two, request to approve a liquor license fee waiver for the event. Three, request to approve an amusement license fee waiver for the event. Four, request to approve a live amplified sound waiver during event hours.
Motion to approve paragraphs one through four.
Second Nero.
Roll call. Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes. Race to the Flag 5K 2013. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following two requests pertaining to the 2013 Race to the Flag event held in the Oakwood subdivision on May 26th, 2013. One, street closures for the Race to the Flag 5K. Two, issuance of a license for amplified sound.
Motion to approve paragraphs one and two. Emery.
Second Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.